Allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, approval amendment of meeting agenda items.
The agenda is as stands.
I move to approve the board meeting items for March eleventh, twenty twenty as presented.
So moved and seconded to approve the board meeting agenda items for March eleventh as presented. March eleventh twenty twenty as presented. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of February twenty sixth, twenty twenty as presented.
So moved and seconded to approve the minutes of February twenty sixth, twenty twenty as presented. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Four point one, minutes of February twenty sixth, twenty twenty. Correspondence?
I have this.
Public comment? Reports. Seven point one, healthy teens report.
Lane, Lane probably have five and a half minutes. Four, okay.
She has only four, so.
Um, so the Oregon healthy teens survey is gonna change, so I wanna talk about that for a little minute, for a few minutes, um, a little bit. You got me all flustered. Um, so this, this year, um, this was our spring of twenty nineteen and the focus was eighth and eleventh graders, so the report that you had. Some years it's been sixth, eighth, and eleventh, like every other year. So we are not assessing this year. So this school year, this nineteen twenty, there will not be assessment for Oregon healthy teens. The state is putting the Oregon healthy teens and Oregon wellness surveys together, and it's gonna be called the Student Health Survey. And so then they will be able to just integrate that, so it will be sixth, eighth, and eleventh every year instead of this every other. And really, it's not valid data because it's different data. Some are the same questions, but it's different in two different surveys. And this is gonna, um, make things, it's gonna minimize the survey burden on school districts, especially when they do it in the spring, they're gonna look at doing it in the fall. I haven't told Ms. Harris that. Because we're doing so much other assessment and testing in the state, that even though this is an assessment, it's still, the kids feel like it's a test, you know, so, so that makes it harder. Um, and then, you know, they really are looking at validity. I think they addressed it really well in the way they did the, um, the, um, all the different slides they did this year. And then it's just that one snapshot in time. So the other thing that I, I think we should all be excited about is that they're gonna take this survey and they're gonna work with this survey with other data, either from our county plans, our Lake County plans, the modules that our principals do for their buildings when it comes to the, um, the SIA. So this new funding source where they're looking at different modules, so this year is, um, PE, and, um, so it's PE, nursing services, and nutrition. And so, so they look at it that way. And I went up to the conference with the staff that's been going on here this spring, just a few weeks ago, and we really reviewed that for an action plan for the district. So we'll have that later on in a few weeks, but we're gonna work on that. So I got to sit with a consultant, and she had looked at all of our data, she looked at our county data. And so when she looked at this Oregon healthy teen survey, she looked at it different than I did. Because I always look at it, you know, what, what is it, you know, what should we look at? And I looked through all of it. But she looked at the things we need to work on in, in sense of, for our, um, you know, health plan, as well as, you know, what we should be celebrating as a district when we look at this. So that's how I'm gonna present it, and then I will, um, and so it's just gonna be five or six areas, and then we can talk about any questions that you guys have. So it is a little bit different, but I like it 'cause I think we can use it. I know that, you know, we have a teacher at the high school that'll share it with seniors and, and, and just has started that in the last year. But we don't really use this after we present it back. And this way we can start using it as a district to start, you know, helping our kids and working through, um, some different things. So, um, I'm gonna jump around just a little bit, and then we can come back to you guys' questions. I'll give you my, but. So I'm gonna go to page twenty-three. So on this side, when we look at, um, so I'm looking at, you know, the eighth and eleventh grade, and I'm looking at the blue as twenty nineteen. So when you go over to the, the fifth frame, um, it has visited an emergency room, urgent care during school hours. We, the little black dot is, um, the state average and we are the blue average. So if you go, we are way over. We are way over in that. So I visited with this school nurse that we've been having coming once a week, and that's Jill Harland. And I said, why do you think? Why do you think? Is it because, you know, we have trans kids that are truant? And, and, and there's chronic absences, and so we say, you need to bring a note before you can come back to school. And she said that it has to do with the way services are provided in this, in this county. She would say that, you know, it's hard for our families to get into doctors. They're going to urgent care and they look at, you know, the walk-in clinic or urgent care or the emergency room as that when it's maybe just a regular appointment, so somebody could be seen by a physician. And so we, we probably need to look at that. But that is higher than the state, and that's higher than we've been in the past as well. So, so that's one area, um, that we, that we need to follow and look at, and we'll continue to look at that.
When was this given?
It was given in the spring of last year.
Spring of last year?
Right, yeah.
What, what time during the spring?
May, April, April, end of April.
They all getting their physicals.
No, I, I think, one of the things I think of that, that the state has the same issues, but also one of the things I think of is a lot of our eleventh graders are in sports. And so they're not gonna go to a doctor's appointments in this practice. But they'll schedule one during language arts classes.
Oh, yeah. Or, I mean, sometimes you're just subject to when they can see you over there, or you gotta wait two weeks for the right time that you really need it. So that could be part of it too.
And that's what Jill feels like. It's really when we, they have access. I mean, kids are going when they have access, families are going when they have access.
Doctor's office visit as opposed to.
Well, is the walk-in.
It's the way the kids answer it. It's the way the kids just answer.
Call them the walk-in clinic, urgent care.
Or emergency room, or, yeah.
The other thing I would say is that we talk about, you know, Orthodox Day at the school, right? 'Cause we will have the people out. I mean, we know when it's happening because we have kids, because it's when it's available in our community, when they come, they come one day. And so, um, I would, I would preface that with exactly what you said, when things are offered. And just.
Yeah, and I think that it's something we need to watch and we need to check on. And I think that, that that's one of the ways of partnering with the hospital for this, and it's public health nurse, but it's through the hospital, how we can maybe kind of start looking at that. And, and where does that come from? And is it a part of our chronic absenteeism, you know, the students that miss a lot, you know?
Walking clinic shuts at four. They don't, maybe sometimes won't take people even after two or three.
So then it could, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
They just start kicking them to the ER.
Um, the se- the second one I'm gonna turn to is page thirty-five. And the concern on this one is the second, um, area over, and it's our eighth and eleventh graders. And it was a question about seriously considering attempting suicide. And so, so that's a concern. I mean, that, I think that's always a concern. I mean, I, I think if it's one person, it's a concern in this community, and I think that, that we really look on that. Um, so Randy and I, and Rosanna and I have been really talking, and then, then those conversations go on to the principals, um, about what do we need to do. And so from the high school, we've had response service, a program. But we realized with the turnover of our staff that we haven't provided that two-year training. We also haven't gotten the updated curriculum. So we're gonna purchase the updated curriculum. We're gonna provide that to our training. Middle school can apply to this, so we need to start, especially with the middle school and high school teachers together. We're gonna, we're gonna offer that. Um, there's the mental health training that mental health offers on mental health first aid, but this is different on how do you as a teacher respond, and who does, who does that teacher go to? And, um, then elementary school, there's not a response program. So, um, Rosanna's looking at a couple of different curriculums and is gonna give us more. And we haven't had that conversation for next year. Yes, Mr. Stratten?
Hot off the press, um, Northlake High School, School District, and Lakeview High School, School District will be working with Francine Winters and bringing in sources of strength, which is suicide prevention. Curriculum.
Ortho kids.
Uh, what do you call it? A, a pro- curriculum. It teaches people how to work with their peers, um, when a kid says I might be suicidal. So we'll have, we'll have coaches in the community from mental health, and then people within the buildings and students, um, do a similar program. It's pretty strong. I just talked to Francine yesterday. So we're, we're, even though, we know this is an issue, but we're also attacking it, so I'm pretty excited.
And, and thanks, because then that weekend, we have a center of action plan to the state on this, so we can add that as well as the response plan, and then we can monitor that and look at what we're doing and how we're moving ahead as a district on things.
So a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
How many teachers do we have in the middle school, high school, come on? Roughly?
I think it's twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. And then, um, how many students do we have between seventh and twelfth grade?
Average is sixty per grade, so six times sixty is three to sixty.
But.
So, just that, seems like a lot of the issues with suicide, not that you don't have them at younger ages, but it's in the changes of middle school to high school, the peer groups, the different influences, different things going on. And it can, every child is different in how they react, and some hide away and some act out, you know? You all know this stuff. So one idea I was thinking of is, what if we challenge our teachers? There's twenty teachers in those, in that group of, in there, that every day connect with a student. Ask them how they're doing, bring them in, hey, stop in at lunch, or stop in after school or before school and just say, how is everything? Not necessarily about grades all the time, but just how they are, how things are going. If they did that five days a week, that's a hundred kids per week, you would touch one-third of your student population every week just by reaching, having a goal of reaching out to one student every day.
You know, I think over the past, we've, we've done some of that, and I think that it's, it's been a great thing. And to be honest, I think that it, it's kind of as a pendulum swing. So I think we've, we've done it, and then we, we don't do it. And I think we need to have consistency, and I think you're right. And we're seeing more and more younger students with self-harm ideas and things that we've ever seen before. And so I know that, um, different programs, and I know different principals do different things with different, with their teachers, and, and, or they send, they mail a card, they pick a kid for the year. I mean, I think they do, or a couple of kids for the year, and I think those are, those are really great ideas. And I think that, um, there's some of that has been going on in our buildings at different times and now, and so. But that's a great suggestion, because I think that, that that's what kids just need, that person to talk to.
They just need somebody, a lot of times it's just knowing that there's somebody out there that cares.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And it, and somebody besides their family unit, or whatever, whatever those issues are, there is somebody that cares about how they are.
And that's the one thing that I think I can speak for Randy, that Randy and I really like about the response program is it really tells those teachers what to say, what to do, kind of that, that curriculum for themselves to really know what to say and know when they've gotta get different help, you know? Can't just be them and that support, it's that next step. And, and it's pretty well spelled out. I think you've used it before, Danae, and, and that's what I love about it, because I think that we, we've gotta have those next steps because, I mean, we need them. I mean, we're, Randy and I are always consulting about different things like that, because we have to, you know, process some of that. So. The next page I'm gonna go to is, um, this is the celebration. It's page forty-three. And, um, so one of the things, um, that I know that we've struggled with is, um, you know, having enough PE minutes. And next year, that's gonna count for the state. And so right now, when you look at our eighth and eleventh graders, um, that's something we need to celebrate as a district, that, that we're higher than the state when it came, comes to physical activities, sixty minutes a day, seven days a week. So the kids answer because we, we do have our kids active. Our kids are active in our schools, they're active outside our schools, just in the things that we offer. We offer a lot of things that are not even organized sports, but then we have all of our organized sports as well. And so, um, that was, that was a real big moment, because we're the only school district up there. There were ten other school districts that had that celebration, and so that, that's a good thing. Um, and then I'm gonna go to page fifty-eight. And on page fifty-eight, um, I'm off now. This one, yeah. Okay. So this one was, um, our tobacco use, any tobacco product is really is high. It's higher than the state, it's higher than we've been prior years. Um, it's a forty percent increase than the state. Um, but if you, and if you look at page sixty-one, e-cigarettes is also forty percent increase. And so when you look at those two together, and it's any product, it could be because of vaping. And I think that, um, vaping has increased, you know, nationally as well as state. And, um, so that is something that I know that, um, Mr. Stratton works really, really hard on probably every day. And, um, education, and I think that, you know, we need to look at what would our, what would our plan be? And I think we've talked about, you know, parent education, um, student education, and some more around that when it comes to, um, that. Do you have any input on that, Mr. Stratton?
Yeah, um, that was one or two pages I clicked, trying to figure out. The kids say, the high schoolers say they buy their vaping products off the internet. That was, that was a main source. Yeah, um, and vaping is huge in our, in our school. Um, you know, I, I walked in on it today. So I, I routinely go into the bathroom three or four different times, and, um, can't catch them, so I don't do searches. But when there's ten guys in the bathroom standing all next to each other, you know, let's, it. Something's going on. So we, we do have a big issue, and I think it's, um, um, it's slowed down, or they've gotten better at it.
Your eyes were about catching them.
We're not catching them. We caught a bunch last year, and I, I haven't caught one this year. So I think it has gotten better, but it's still an issue.
I was at a Medford school, beacon for last, and big signs on the bathroom doors about vaping.
We put, um, flyers, ASB puts flyers together, a monthly thing to read in the stall. It's called Stall News. And it always has something about vaping, so it's out there. We talk to them. But I, I, I forget page it's on, but somebody, I got earmarked, so give me a second here. Um, it's on the questions. Um, e-cigarettes, e-cigarettes or other vaping, right? How easy would it be for you to get some? And our, our high schooler said, almost sixty percent of them said it'd be easy to very easy. Sort of easy, very easy to get e-cigarettes. And I was like, wow.
Do they just come on Amazon? You just click the button?
Yeah, you go, so you go get an Amazon card at Safeway or wherever you buy those cards, so you use your Amazon gift cards when you're buying.
Kids are also like the sweatshirts that have the, the strings. They're vaping, there's vaping devices in those, purcha- they can purchase those. There's also just little thumb drives. I, um, I call them a zip drive thumb drive that you use in school. Um, they, they could be a vaping, um, material. Lane and I talked a little bit about what about the vaping detectors, and I visited about that at Oregon Healthy Schools, and they were worried about, was it legal? Well, then since then, I researched and done a little bit of looking into it, and there are school districts that have that. So I, I don't know where the law is on that, but, but other schools are putting them in because kids are just vaping in classrooms. I mean, and teachers are not knowing, because if they're not, they don't have to exhale. They can take all the smoke in, there's no smoke. There might be a flavor smell, like fruity-tudy or, I don't know. But, um, I haven't really looked into that part. But I mean, some teachers aren't catching them, but in big high schools, we're seeing a lot of that. It really is. I think I heard it somewhere. But, um.
So we also, so we had thirty-six, I think thirty-seven or thirty-six eleventh graders take this survey using e-cigarette, cigarette or vaping product in the last thirty days, and it breaks it down. So the one answer says all thirty days, eleven percent. So roughly three kids used a vaping product all thirty days, three of thirty kids. And.
Those are kids that were out of school that day.
Out of school that day.
Well, and there was also some tests on that, some assessments on that, because they had, the validity of this is there's several questions that ask the same thing, and if, they could tell if a student is, you know, messing around or not being serious. And then so it also said there where the validity pieces that they, they had tossed out a few too.
I think they tossed out one, two eighth grade and one.
Is that what it was?
This says on the front, first or second page. So yes, e-cigarettes is an issue.
And, and we've brought in Francine Winters to our middle school health, um, as prevention, so she's doing some education and information and, and things like that. So we're, we're trying to educate, right, um, the risks of it as well through our health classes.
So it's kinda replaced chewy.
Yes, it has.
Used to be chewy.
Right, right, right.
There's, there's.
Odorless, try to hide it in your lip, and lunch, and whatever, and then it disappears in your Pepsi cup, or, yeah.
Are you, are you seeing chew? I mean, I don't, I don't think we're seeing that right now, yeah.
There's, there's no coke.
But it was just as private.
Right, it was, it was. And even just a few years ago, it was, yeah.
Single day, yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have smokers.
So, so, um, those were the, the few things that, um, that I pulled out. Do you guys have questions, other things?
I pulled out a few things as well.
Sure, sure. I can.
Uh, page thirty-one, I thought that was an interesting page with the, um, stuff we talked about on page thirty-five, but just proceeding to the state average for, has experienced any type of bullying on the way to, from or at school during the past thirty days in the eighth grade. We've been across the board for three years, um, surveyed above the state average. And then the last two for the eleventh grade, last two times we've been surveyed, the eleventh grade. And, you know, so just right after that was page thirty-five, that talked about the suicide, um, stuff. I see some of that going hand in hand. Um, you know, it's a tough, tough issue to address in school, is the bullying, but I've heard it from the community over the years. Um, I think it's, it's an issue, and I don't know the best way to address that.
I think some of the ways we've addressed it, and Lane, by all means, jump in, is that, you know, we are, we're having to re-educate our, our students and our families when they call about what is bullying, and what's the difference between that. But, but, but there is, and I think that one of the main things is that I see more discipline around that, if they're bullying with other kids in, in all of the buildings, because it's just something that there's just no tolerance for. We shouldn't be tolerating that. Um, is it going on? Yes. But if it's brought to the attention and people are aware of it, I think teachers are more aware of it. And I just think that continued education is so important so that, so that we can continue to educate our families, and then our administration will, um, deal with that. And, and I know you guys take a hard stance with that.
Some, some of the hard things to, to deal with, when, when dealing with bullying, is they call it bullying off the bat. And then after Mr. Rose or I investigate it, find out it's mutual behavior, um, al- almost always. So usually we go with that, we identify both parties, say knock it off, stop, do checkups with them, and usually it stops. What, what you will see though is you will see the same kids that are involved in bullying get involved in again, but with different parties. Um, to, for, so for me, a lot of times it's a, um, a learned behavior. It's almost a.
Reflection of your parents' behavior sometimes.
Just it, it, it's, um, not that we don't address it or deal with it, but sometimes it seems like it's, it's the same kid, same scenario.
Different person.
Different person. And we try to, you know, go through the social skills. You know, I say, ignore it, use your words, tell an adult, get to me if it doesn't stop. And hardly ever do they come back to me and say, I stopped. Usually it stops or they forgot about it, or they've given up on it. And so then everybody just screams, well, I've been bullied, I've been bullied. And it goes back to, what does this document define as bullying? And what does the community, students, and parents define as bullying, and try to make that connection? Do we have kids that are made fun of, teased, poked at? Yes, all the time. Is it reported? Less than ten percent. Now is that where we need to look at it? I don't know. And even when it is reported, we fix it. They never come back and say, well, it hasn't stopped. 'Cause usually if it hasn't stopped, we're talking about suspension or an arrest or an expulsion. And usually it stops, and we bring in both parties and it stops. So it's, it's kind of aggravating, um, because I think as much as any school will work on it, counselors, principals, peer groups, it's still here, and it's not because of the lack of effort by the school district.
And that's one of the biggest frustrations, and I was a principal too, and I'm, I took a very gone, tolerant stance towards bullying. I think my biggest problem was all the years I did it, you know, is, is going about it. It wouldn't come and tell me about it, or the parent wouldn't come and tell me about it, fester and continue, and then a lot of time I would wind up on Facebook, that's what I'd worry about. School's not doing anything about bullying. And then whatever I would do, I'd call that parent up and say, well, how can I help you? It's like you have a concern. So, let's say you got forty kids, and they answered the survey about bullying.
Bulling.
Are they, are they, uh, acknowledging initial bullying? Or are they acknowledging extended periods of bullying?
I don't think it defines that, does it? Yeah.
So, so you could get a lot of initial, a lot of the poking, fun at, you know, calling that bullying. But then there's that, that second, third, and fourth kind of type of stuff.
And we do, we probably have, you know, not to sound like a Peter, but we have ten percent. So we, we take ten percent of kids that continue, they're in one of our offices, that kids are harassing or making fun of them. Sometimes it's their actions, and so we have to work with them on their social skills on that, because they don't understand that their social skills are awkward in other bubbles, other arenas. And so we work with them on those social skills, and they're saying they're being bullied because they're left out. Well, that, that's not bullying if you're left out or not included, what they call it. And so it's, again, going back to that definition that crosses. We do have kids that have hard lives. We try our best to work with them. It's frustrating on this level.
Mr. Stratton, is some of it still out on social media, and then it carries on into the school? Like it'll happen over the weekends or evenings, or, and a lot of times that's how it comes into the schools?
Yeah.
At the elementary level, and I know Lane ceases to. If we look at our society and how much, how much it's changed, you would expect a rise in this, because our kids have so few social skills and emotional skills. They don't know how to interact with peers if there's any conflict at all, or they can't get along. And so they escalate, and they say really hateful things or make threats, and then they end up with us, and then we're doing some of that social emotional teaching with those kids, because they just start coming to us with those K-12. It doesn't really matter what age, we have a certain population, and it's getting to be a higher and higher population of kids that are not ready to learn and don't have the social emotional skills to even interact in a classroom, or in a social group, or in a, in a recess game, or, or any of that stuff. And so that is a really common thing, while I'm being bullied. Well, you, you need to learn and, and get the tools to interact with people too, and figure out how to, how to advocate for yourself, how to do lots of those things.
Why is the behavior happening?
It definitely is escalating, helping, and I, it wasn't like that four years ago. And it's hard to see little, little kids creating those walls because they don't know how to interact. But then they've put them there, and then you can see the other kids looking at them. But then they've put them there and then you can see the other kids looking at them differently. And so then why do they care? Why do they want to try to fit in? So. It's definitely changing.
Pretty rough with me, really.
Yeah.
That's what's what's odd to me is is how accepting our students are to students of color. Um uh social economics status. Second language speakers, we have we have this couple of special ed kids, our students are so accepting to that. Where the bullying is, is almost within their peer group, within their little circles. Yeah, you know, I mean, we dealt with it, you dealt with it incident today, I dealt with it yesterday. Where they're so co- they're common in everything they have. Yeah, they're competing for stuff is where we're seeing it. You know, it's not the kid that has different shoes because he has a disability that's getting bullied. And so that's that's even the harder part, is how accepting our kids are of certain populations. But within their own ring, that's where they're me, and usually it's a competition over something. At the high school, middle school, it's usually a competition over something, whether it's a status in the the herd. Or a starting position or or a grade or a boyfriend or a girlfriend.
And I will say, I've also seen it as with like a kiddo who was threatened to be put in the toilet and headfirst and. But then that kiddo also gets in trouble because they start to try to deal with it themselves too. And then you have a conflict and that's what shows up for you guys sometimes is the conflict, right? And so it's hard as the adults out there to see. How did it start first? Where did it come from? Why is this? You know, and so I think that there is some of that that happens and it's hard to decipher. Once the other one starts engaging.
Well, and I I think a lot of it is when you talk about it is that it's really important, it's like the sources of strength, right? So if we can get other peers, right, want to identify, what does it look like when my friend's not doing well? When they're having suicidal, if we can do the same thing with social conflict with bullying, right? When friends can identify and say, hey, what you're saying and doing isn't right. It's peer to peer that has the most impact to make the most difference, right? So the more that we can help all of our kids identify those and be strong enough to say, hey, what you're doing isn't okay. That's what helps those peers more than Mr. Stratton intervening. More than coming and talking even to an adult because my right-handed peer, right, stood up for me. I've got somebody, I've got support, and so it really is about us helping our other kids, right?
Stopping the conflict, right, stopping this one from finally saying that's enough. Right, and then you have two parties that are.
I think, you know, next year, we've we've been talking about, you know, having um training for our teachers with trauma informed. And we really need to be a trauma informed school because our kids are coming in with a lot more than they've ever come in with. You know, with the environments they live in or things in the um community or even within the school. And so I think by starting with our teachers and training our teachers, it's gonna help as they help our kids. And I and so that's that's one of the biggest things that um the group that. And does a great job in this state on trauma informed and other places, there are there are known um speakers that come in and do some training. Will come in and really help our teachers so that then it's not just, you know, the administration, it's gonna be, everybody's gonna have that same. You know, verbiage, knowledge, plus they can they can help with that as well, so.
Tools.
So tools that they can have as well as help them, I mean, sometimes we don't know if even what our teachers come in with, you know, at times. So I think that's good. You do got more there? No, you're good.
I mean, obviously, just to wrap up the bullying, obviously, you guys have been putting a lot of thought into it and I appreciate that, I mean, it's. A tough issue when just knowing that you're putting a lot of energy into it, it means a lot. Um so another couple of other things I had that were interesting was page fifty two. And it's pure norms, and so how wrong do your friends feel in the for YouTube? And it has the things listed, and if you can see, the first one, have one or two drinks in an alcoholic beverage nearly every day. Our peer norms um for our disapproval by our peers is below the state average uh significantly. In many of those cases. So our peers are approving of their actions essentially. But that was an interesting piece, and then that ties into uh page fifty five, sources of alcohol. Eighth and eleven, you know, at a party, the first one, you know, above uh the state average. And then the one that really jumped out to me was the fourth one over a parent or guardian with their permission, if you look at. Eighth grade, that's uh the state average is about thirty five percent and we're up to about eighty two percent. Um for eighth graders that are drinking, getting it from their parents. In their homes with their permission, so. Those couple of things really jumped out at me when I read it. And the last thing that jumped out at me, since we've had some conversations about it, was uh back to page twenty one, food insecurities and hunger. And I think a lot of times there's a perception that maybe what we call frontier Oregon um struggles more with. Some of these issues and um are at the state level or. Lord or communities and what I'm seeing is we are right there at the state average, we're slightly bullied. It was a reminder.
Thank you.
See the housing instability on the next page on twenty two, I mean, it's only, it's approximately two kids. Experienced unstable housing, slept somewhere other than with their parent or guardian. And then the the one, the other one was slept away from parents or guardians because they were kicked out, ran away or abandoned. Yeah, you're talking, you're talking in our survey approximately two kids out of the thirty six.
Yeah, and I think when you you start boiling, pulling this all together of pure norms of of drinking. With accessibility of alcohol, you know, with baking. And bullying, the insecurities. Um and then you start looking at the suicide. About a lot of issues, I mean, and it all adds up and it all adds up differently for every individual.
That's way real.
I think I'd still rather have my kids in Lake County School District, Lake City School District than anywhere else, but uh. You know, I don't wish we were anywhere else.
Right.
I don't know if dress is greener anywhere else.
Mm-hmm. And I think we're just, I think that's part of what the um Oregon Health and Schools is looking at is. You know, three things a year for the next five years, this was the first year, right, yeah? So four more years of, you know, how can we take, you know, two or three of the items, um. Cause they have a whole circle of stuff and, I mean, the big push is funding and and but there is funding and. And we know that, you know, we can add some stuff as the years go on too with with um different, more grants than we've ever had. Because that's just kind of the way right now and so how we work through all these things, so.
Well, the other thing that I was kind of surprised that we're so far above the average on the marijuana page, um.
Which page are you on?
Uh sixty three. Especially eighth graders that are. Eating what it seems, brownies, cakes, cookies and candy, and I mean, we blow out the. We're crazy high.
It's at a hundred percent. Have a have ate edible.
I think it's easy access, how it's where they.
At thirty days.
If you use it, so it's those.
Is uh used.
Oh, of the kids who use, so yeah.
One hundred percent of the. It's not all.
It's not for you to want to use it.
Yeah, I think it's easy access.
Well, well, that's not my. There's four adults in the classroom now and. It's great, I mean, it's bringing down the noise level and the chaos. And they all just want attention, so us, it's just, it's about hiring more people. And I keep seeing more parents and going.
Alright, that's a good observation, thanks. Anything else?
That's all I have, thank you guys.
Thank you.
It look, it took a little bit longer than five and a half.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure everybody took the.
They all cringe if I have to help you.
You made a bathroom break, didn't you? Okay. Uh eight, old business. Special meeting April second.
Uh basically, it's part of the motion to determine that you probably will not give a weed term, you need to meet with me for a second. That would probably you discuss the time starting at five o'clock, so probably have that time here.
No.
Okay.
I move to approve the special meeting scheduled for April second, two thousand and twenty with a start time of five P M and five P M.
So moved and seconded to approve the special meeting scheduled for April second, twenty twenty at five P M. As presented, all favors, in front of us saying hi, hi, motion carries, new business.
Well, they were you with channel Lakeview and uh thanks for keeping them a bit of credit to the special against you.
I'm just super, super excited for opportunity like this cause it reminds me and brings me back to the days of um. How like I think his name, Claire Claire Thomas, um um but I like it even better because it's ten minutes away. Um and I think it can be a K twelve outdoor school with um with the addition to uh summertime employment. Uh some career and trade stuff, um. I can't wait to get kids after it and I already know two or three people that are waiting to get it going. Um I'm thinking Amy Marcus, she's super excited about it, so um I'm excited this happened and I'm. To be part of it, I'm even more excited to say, yeah, I helped work with it and get it going and appreciate Dustin and his efforts, um. Cause this is, this is, I mean, we can use, art can use this, science can use this, I think almost art can use this, I think. It'll be amazing what we do and and how we can get there and and look at different things, um so. Pretty excited, pretty excited.
I'm just gonna add a little background. The city um has eighteen hundred acres that they own of Bullard Canyon. Five hundred of that is timber, they obviously have some juniper grounds, some range ground. A little bit of everything, it's municipal watershed as well, a couple of streams, springs. Different um types of uh stands of timber out there from mixed conifer to. To pine, to juniper, to you know, Aspen stand, so. Uh where this came from, through my work with the city. Saw a need for them to pursue a management plan, um. We're going down a group of, I got together a group of natural resource professionals. Uh we're going down that path to get a management plan developed for the city to get them actively managing that watershed for multiple uses and maybe expanding upon it for. Um some recreation and different different things up there. Uh but anyways, caught wind that uh Dusty Council was interested in getting back to doing some. Outdoor activities like Claire Thomas did and some monitoring and so on, so we made contact with Dusty and. Very excited to get out there and do that, and so we're gonna uh work with Amy Marcus and. Nick Johnson at L C R I and myself and the Watershed Council and different folks and. Get a kind of a monitoring program set up for um the uplands and riparian areas and different. Um whether it's range or forest and then as that progresses to do some active management, there'll be some good data come out of it for. Um kind of pre and post treatments and. How that responds over time.
I see some other SAE supervised agricultural experiences coming out of this two-year projects. Where kids jump in there, they're sophomore, junior year, ride a project for two years, maybe with some summertime employment. Pretty excited.
Jeff, you're the attorney on both sides of this, do you have any?
Nope, that's a great partnership, I think, like long-term, it'll benefit both organizations.
I asked in the preseason or the pre-meeting uh about if there was gonna be a plan in place if a kid were to get hurt. While they were up on the mountain, you know, somewhere on that eighteen hundred acres, but we would have a plan in place. I was sure that it would be for that.
Yeah.
It's good. Sometimes you get into that one hour thing though, you know, if there's a bad injury, a bad bleed or something going on. Just just put that process.
So I'm really excited about this, getting going with Dusty and then getting that expanded out through other grades and classes and. You know, I just my vision would be awesome. Little kid is a kindergarten or first grader up on a piece of ground and same piece of ground when they're in twelfth grade and. You know, that whole history curriculum expanded upon, there's so much opportunity.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the town of Lakeview and Lake County School District seven regarding the Ford Canyon property as presented.
So moved and seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding between the town of Lakeview and Lake County School District number seven. Regarding the Bullard Canyon property as presented, all favors in the favor of saying hi, hi, motion carries. Point two, horticultural field trip.
Uh so just here to ask um for permission again to go on our um spring field trip. To the Woodburn area to look at some different nurseries. Um probably a little bit more condensed schedule this year just because it was so hard to find a date with the kids. You know, originally we had the trip to Europe and Abbott and just a lot of different things going on, but again, to give them a little bit of taste of some of the different opportunities. And the industry and kind of a bigger spectrum than what we have here uh right now, looking like about fifteen kids. I'm interested in going, so it'll be April fifth, sixth and seventh, so leaving Sunday and. Coming back on Tuesday in time hopefully for baseball, softball, East.
Any questions?
Yep, I'm to approve the two thousand nineteen twenty horticulture field trip presented.
So moved and seconded to approve the twenty nineteen twenty horticulture field trip as presented, all favors in front of us saying hi, hi, motion carries.
Hi.
Consent agenda.
Thanks, sir, as presented, uh one thing I will I will make note of, the calendar is in there with this changes you suggested.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, all favors in the favor of saying hi, hi, motion carries, announcements.
I think I'll do a break for the high school, um you know, I attended the Erie Cup presentation yesterday, just phenomenal. Very narrow rotary today, uh three of the the well, three winners came to Rotary Day, just did an awesome job there as well, so. As always, I'm very impressed with the Erie Cup program and kudos to, you know, high school administration, of course, the high school teachers.
Are they coming again this year?
I believe we did have here, we'll talk.
When was the first year of Erie Cup? Nineteen sixty five, there we go, we found that out today.
There are a lot of us in that room today that uh were participants in Erie, perfect, the the Erie, or the Erie.
Would you like to, one or two?
Sure. I don't know, whenever.
We're a secondary committee.
Size room.
Well, sure, well, let's, we'll try.
Are they, are they recording?
Or the innovator? Or the innovator?
Speech is like.
Have them keep practicing, practicing. You kind of gotta do that. They're on something new by this. We'd like to see.
I'll see what you do.
I don't know what the time allows.
Okay.
Alright, any other announcements?
No, sir.
Next board meeting agenda items.
Well, I would suggest probably the board meeting be configured with uh the things that I have to do first. And then with, based on the committee screens and everything, then I excuse myself and you can continue on, so. Hit it, uh we'll hit S I A first and a brief report on the bond thing and uh and go that route, so.
Have a brief uh. I think conferences are the eighth and ninth, ninth and tenth.
Eighth and ninth.
So the survey that's going out and a brief update on the survey and the plan of the time.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll go ahead and insert a few too.
And how we.
I think only one of you said, only one of you sent your response to it, but yeah, we'll get it developed and figure out your plan of the path, yeah, good point. Tandy, were you wanting to insert a consent agenda into that too?
Yeah, there'll just be a couple of volunteers and things in the consent agenda, no big deal.
So, okay, so if that's super turn, super test, it's first last on the agenda, so.
All right. So our five o'clock start. Special meetings. Okay, excellent. That was a change.
After we touched on that.
Yeah.
Aside from your second, whatever you made about summer.
All right. The journalist.
I move the agenda.
Moved the second to the journal. Question carries.